...City Council Wednesday, June 19th. Please stand for an invocation led by Councilmember Joel Davis of District 5 and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... states on the disbanding of the Army. Almighty God, we make it our earnest prayer that Thou will keep the United States in Thy holy protection, that Thou wilt incline the hearts of the citizens to cultivate a spirit of subordination and obedience to government, and entertain a brotherly affection and love for one another and for their fellow citizens of the United States of America at large. And finally, that Thou wilt most graciously be pleased to dispose us all to do justice, to love mercy, and to demean ourselves with that charity, humility, and pacific temper of mind which were the characteristics of the divine author of our blessed religion, and without whose example in these things we can never hope to be a happy nation. Grant our supplication, we beseech Thee through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Vice President Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Morning.
We first would ask that you would turn off or silence all electronic devices before or upon entering our council meeting. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address clearly for the record. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office on Thursday proceeding Tuesday in which you'd like to speak before 2:00 P.M. The subject that you want to speak about must be pertinent to City of Mobile business. Any person who doesn't follow these instructions and doesn't provide that notice to the clerk's office will not be allowed to speak on a non-agenda item. Each speaker is allowed five minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no public, no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to myself who serves as chair, and I will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and all public outcry allowed. These are the rules of the council meeting, and we're certainly appreciative of your interest in your municipal government.
Approval of minutes of June 11th. So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second in a discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications from the mayor's office.
Mr. Vice President, we would like to recognize Chief Roy Hodge to present to you the Officer of the Month.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's my pleasure to stand here before you today to recognize the Mobile Police Officer of the Month for the month of May 2019, Officer Blake Duke. Officer Duke has been a member of the Mobile PD since September of 2018, not a full year yet. Prior to his current tenure with us, he was a firefighter with the Mobile Fire Department for six years. He wised up somewhere along the way and from the dark side over to our side, and we're glad to have him. Blake holds a very unique distinction. He's in a club all by himself in one regard, that he was recognized in the month of May as the Police Officer of the Month. He also received the same honor as firefighter of the month while working with the Mobile Fire Department. So, we believe he is the only one that's ever received both of those awards. So, good job by Blake. Give you a small snapshot of what Blake did during the month of May 2019. On May 2nd, he initiated a traffic stop where it was discovered the three occupants of the vehicle, including the driver, had active warrants. The driver also was found to be in possession of ecstasy and marijuana. The vehicle contained more illegal drugs and two handguns, one of which was stolen. Three days later, Officer Duke was flagged down near Sullivan Park where a fight was taking place. As he pulled into the parking lot, he heard a shot fired. He spotted the shooter and recovered the firearm without incident. The shooter was charged with reckless endangerment and shooting a firearm within Mobile City limits. Those are just two small snapshots of many things that he did during the month. Officer Duke's initiative, enthusiasm, and excellence in overall performance of his duties shows a proactive policing style that is a tremendous asset to the City of Mobile. Therefore, on behalf of Mobilians, the mayor's office, the chief's office, and the city council, we're pleased to present you this certificate of recognition naming you the Officer of the Month for 2019.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second in a discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for away with the noise ordinance on Scenic Drive, June 22nd, Industrial Parkway North, July 5th, Burtonwood Drive, August 10th, August 31st, September 1st, September 14th, and September 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second in a discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Today is the appeal of Shell Fury, Diana Kubat, and Drew Walsh concerning the planning commission's approval to allow four mausoleums in an R1 district at 1503 and 1529 Wolf Ridge
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jay Watkins. I'm returning with Maynard Cooper and Gale here in Mobile. Address is 11 Northwater Street, Suite 24290, Mobile 36602. I'm here today on behalf of Moho Partnership LLC, which is the party who is seeking to acquire this 22-acre parcel at Wolf Ridge Road near Moffitt. And they went to the planning commission for approval to put a mausoleum structure. Basically, it's four mausoleums on this property together with a covered pavilion. The property is currently zoned residential, R1, and under the charter of permitted uses for the zoning ordinance, in order to use the property as a cemetery or mausoleum, you have to get planning approval. This is not a rezoning. We're not asking for the property to be rezoned for residential use. We're simply asking for permission to use it in a way that the ordinance allows if the planning commission sees this as an appropriate use. You have a packet, I think, from the staff which shows the site and the site plan, I think on page 10. You'll see that the approval for this property requires a 200-foot vegetative buffer on three sides. And so, this is a very large wooded tract right now. What the developer and the end user is planning to do is to take a very small piece of that property to build, to clear and build these mausoleums. The approval by the planning commission, which was granted, was site plan specific. And so what that means is that in order for the applicant or owner to come in and make any changes whatsoever, to expand their use of this property, to make any impact on the 200-foot buffer that has been required by the planning commission, they have to come back to the planning commission, they have to give further notice to the surrounding neighbors, and those folks have an opportunity to be heard at that point. And so, we have had appeals from various neighbors, and Mr. Cooper Trent, who works with the seller of this property, I think has met with a number of those folks, and I think some of them are here today to talk with you about their concerns. But the concerns that we've really heard the most about was the name, Heritage Garden. As you may be aware, there has been some press recently about Heritage Garden in Pritchard, which has had some concerns about the way they have been managing their cemetery. This facility, that name was selected by the engineer who did the survey work, and he put that on the application. That is not reflective of the ownership of this property, it's not reflective of the management of the company that will be running the facilities there. It is a completely different owner and completely different operation, and has absolutely no affiliation with the operations in Pritchard. There has been, was concern about the drainage from this property, and just like with any other development in the City of Mobile, this development would be required to fall within the stormwater management requirements of the city ordinances, and any water on this site has to be maintained and detained, just like any other development. A third issue that was raised was the location of the entryway drive on this site, and the planning commission's approval of this has given latitude to traffic engineering Jennifer White and Mary Beth to locate that entryway drive in such a fashion as not to impact the across-the-street neighbor who did not want the two driveways to line up for traffic reasons. I think if you look at this site plan and you realize that there's a 200-foot vegetative, natural vegetative buffer between the property owners to the west and the south and north, and recognize that a 200-foot buffer is roughly three-quarters of a football field, that's a very deep stretch of wooded area to buffer between this mausoleum use and the surrounding residential uses. I would also point out to the council that several years ago, this site was before the planning commission for a residential development, and the planning commission approved this for a 72-lot residential subdivision that tied into the existing stub streets at Chesterfield Drive. And so, the developer here feels like the proposed use and the buffering that has been provided and guaranteed, so to speak, by the planning commission with respect to making this site plan specific, really makes this use a very minimal intrusion on anybody else in the surrounding areas and reduces the perception, so to speak, of someone having a cemetery in their backyard or next door. A 200-foot strip with 50-foot residential lots would be four additional residential lots between the neighboring properties and this development. So with that, we would ask that the council deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's decision.
Any questions?
For Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
I've heard, I had people contacting me regarding noise. What about that one?
Except for the days when there are interments at the mausoleum, I do not anticipate that there would be much noise there at all.
I hope not.
This would, I would anticipate this being a very, a very quiet use of this property as opposed to, as I said earlier, if this were a residential development, it would be subject simply to the existing city noise ordinances, which are, I think, seven to 10 or something along those lines. But this would be a very, it's intended to be a very quiet, very peaceful use. It will be gated, and so access after hours would be controlled, so you're not worried about people coming in there in the evenings and, you know, teenagers being in there drinking or other untoward activities taking place there. I think this would be a very minimal impact use for this property.
I am glad you named that one because the issue was raised of drinking, drugs, prostitution. So you're saying, once it's closed, it's gated, they can't even go up there?
In the, yes, sir. I think it's a dusk to dark, it will be open, but I think like any of the other cemeteries, the Magnolia Cemetery here in town, places like that, there will be controlled access.
Yes.
If I could comment?
Mrs. Richardson.
Unless Mr. Richardson has more.
The last issue they raised was lights. They didn't want to see any lights.
Yes, sir. The planning commission's approval required a photometric study and that to be submitted as part of their permitting, just like any other commercial use or any other residential, multifamily residential use. The light on the site cannot leave the boundaries of that site. And again, with the 200-foot buffering, and this is, this is a heavily wooded area, and so they're talking about, when they come in to develop this portion of the property, that 200-foot border around three sides is not going to be touched. And so, the chance of light penetrating off the site is, I would think, very remote and will not be permitted by the city.
And the people in Chesterfield State, they can't see anything down there?
I'm sorry, sir, one more time?
People living in Chesterfield State, they bought us this property, it's impossible for them to see.
I can't speak to whether it's possible for them to see anything.
It's wood.
It's wood. It is a heavily wooded area, and it's a 200-foot strip of heavily wooded area between the back property line of that residential subdivision and the beginning of the area that's developed for the mausoleum.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you. As a member of the planning commission on behalf of this council, I attended that meeting, and my observation was not in opposition to what was being planned, especially with the natural buffer staying in place and not having any cross-traffic coming through the neighborhood, which is very stressful, and also working with the business across the street for placement of the traffic location, the opening for this development. It was pointed out that the residents did not get clarification that it wasn't a rezoning. You've mentioned that, so it does not involve a rezoning. The property stays R1. The other thing that was important, and the council member who I spoke to after the meeting, because I knew there would be citizens that had questions, I'm not surprised that there isn't this appeal because of the questions that were left at the table, but hopefully through more dialogue that's taken place, that having security was a big concern because anytime something changes, and they said they already have some security issues with that vacant property today. If anything, this will be a better oversight, especially if it's gated. So, my opposition had more to do with community knowledge and them sitting with the applicant, and that's always a helpful mechanism to put in place.
Yes, ma'am. I think during the period of time from the planning commission meeting until today's appeal, the folks that have raised appeals, as I said, Mr. Trent has been reaching out to that community and has spoken to a number of those folks, and I hope has all laid their fears and concerns. I have, I'm no different than anyone else. I wouldn't want a cemetery with a privacy fence behind my lot. But I think in this instance, with the amount of buffering that is being provided.
Yes.
And the site plan specificity that they've agreed to through the planning commission would give a level of protection to the surrounding neighborhood that should minimize, if any, the detriment to having this type of use.
I don't disagree. Thank you.
Any further comments, statements for Mr. Watkins?
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during this particular bill? If you would.
Yes, we have Elaine Swanson.
I live at 1508 Stratford Court. It's on the cul-de-sac on the Chesterfield subdivision. So, I bought this house a little over a year ago, and when I bought the house, I did a research into the neighborhood, I talked to neighbors, I looked at all the houses, I saw that there weren't abandoned cars, people were improving their property. I got on the city maps and looked at the GIS, saw the Wolf Ridge property that was all wooded and zoned for residential, so I'm assuming that there's going to be a development, you know, put back there. So, I bought my house because I thought it was an excellent investment. And so, then when this issue came up, I got online, and I was looking to see if there was any detriment to a cemetery being put in my backyard, and that's when I saw that if you live within a zip code of a cemetery, your value of your house will go down 12%. Now, that's $150,000 I sell my house for, I lose $18,000. $100,000 I lose, so I can't afford to be losing $18,000, $12,000. And that's just me, and you have, what, 30, 40, 50 residents around there whose value also drops, and it is just not fair or justified for somebody else to develop their property at the detriment of mine. So, anyway, that's the financial end of it. When I demoed my house, you could walk in any window, any busted window, it leaked, there was mold all over the place. It's in a cul-de-sac. I have several really nice homes. We walked in, there's needles all over the floor. I wouldn't let my kids touch them. And that is in a wide-open neighborhood where everybody can see and call the police. So, when they talk about this gated community, I don't know what's going to stop people from walking around, but I don't want to invite that element into my backyard again, and 200 feet isn't anything. What, here to there? A little bit, a little bit longer? Okay. And the original planning for, to be resident, I think it was thought out by the zoning committee at the time as a future revenue, and I just don't know how you can condone losing that revenue in the future at the, by putting the cemetery in now, and I don't know, it just, she seems short-sighted. Anyway, so the three things. One is you devalue my house, two is you invite the crime element back into my neighborhood again, and three is you lose future revenue for the possibility of putting homes back there. And I have no qualms about them putting homes back there, because if you put homes back there, it just brings up the value of my property, and a rising tide raises all boats, and I have, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Richardson?
I would just like to say that you would have to go to the state of Louisiana to find a mausoleum. A cemetery is where you bury people, and it is not connected with the church. A graveyard is where you bury people, and the graveyard is connected with the church. Up in the country, we had graveyards. At the church here, and they buried them right there. But if you have to drive across town to bury them, that's a cemetery. They're all sunk into the ground. I can understand cemetery, but a mausoleum, it's a whole different matter. It's not a cemetery, it's not a graveyard. Nobody's going to be put in the ground, and this is an expensive proposition. So, it's not the same, a mausoleum is not the same as a cemetery, and this is something new for this community. We don't have, we don't have that. Now, in New Orleans, you have mausoleums because it is, the city is below sea level. You put a gray casket down there, it'll wash up, so they go, they go above ground. And I've been in South America, I've been in the mausoleums there, but in City of Mobile, this is new. We don't, we don't have any, any mausoleums.
Drew Walsh?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
My wife, Diana Kibitan, myself, we were the ones that filed an appeal initially, and we've had some conversations with Mr. Watkins and Mr. Trent regarding our concerns. Our issue is not with the what's going there, we don't have any problems with what's going in there. Our issue is with the drainage for the property. We have the, between ourselves and our neighbors, we have about 130 acres across the street. Well, as you well know, Mobile didn't make a mistake putting the waterboard that high up. That's where the gravity-fed water comes from. Unfortunately, it all comes, when it rains, it all comes to our property, and we literally have a river that runs through our property. We can't handle any more water. So, we have to have the retention pond set up, and we have to have, we have to have some assurances that the four-foot pipe that we had to put in our driveway to keep the water from washing out our driveway to be able to access our home is protected and that we're not going to have to pull a bulldozer out every time we have a rainstorm. So, that's our biggest concern, is about the runoff of the water, making sure that the city does do something active, because the church next door that has a retention pond, it does not hold the water. It's not adequate for the water that comes down there, and it's actually washing out a big part of our property in a very old oak tree that's in the front corner of our property. So, that is our biggest issues. I don't think this meeting, after talking to Mr. Watkins and Mr. Trent, I don't think that issue has to do with what's going on today as far as the approval for getting this in there. But I did want to get that on record, talking about the drainage, and also there's a, there's a small lake on the property too, and I want to know if that's going to be drained or if that's going to be affected, that, when the, if this is approved and goes forward. So, and the drives also, Mr. Rich, I believe you addressed that, but the driveways, making sure that they're not going up across the street or directly across from our driveway.
Patricia Moore?
Good morning.
I am not so much displeased at...
Ms. Moore, if you could give us your name and address, please.
I'm sorry. I'm Patricia Moore. I live at 1600 East Chesterfield Drive, and that's directly behind the property. For the most part, the people on Chesterfield Drive did not get any notification, and none of us have been able to speak to, other than the waters, no one else has been able to speak to the owner of the property or the developer of the property. We don't have any information. Maybe if, as Ms. Rich said, they had had a meeting with the community, these questions, we wouldn't be here, because all of us have other things to do. And still, even with the notification from the city for the meetings, I read in the report that it said that, because we complained about the notification, said that they sent it out on the first of the month. Well, that was actually the date for the letter, but that was not actually the date that it was mailed. It was actually mailed on May 14th and dated on the 1st. So, we had about three or four days to get together to decide whether or not what we wanted to do with this. The same thing from the last notification for this meeting was done on May the 12th, I'm sorry, on June the 12th, we got, which was a Wednesday, we got it on a Friday, and we're here less than a week again. And it seemed like if they know that this information, they have this information in hand, they could submit it to the residents so that we can have proper notification and be able to sit down and talk with whoever is coming before this committee. The only thing that I'm concerned about right now is that as my property backs up directly to Wolf Ridge Road's property, I already have rabbits, raccoons, and snakes in my backyard. Just within the last two, three weeks, I've had two snakes in my backyard that comes over from that property. I'm concerned that when they start disturbing that property, what's going to happen with the animals, whatever is back there? What's going to protect our property and us from what comes back there when they start disturbing? I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the drainage. I've already had the existing property owners to have to cut back the overgrowth that grows on my side of the property several times. And if this property is sold to the next person that's trying to develop it, I want to be assured that they will continue to maintain my property by taking care of theirs. And I am truly concerned about the wildlife that's going, that's back there that's going to be trying to run away from what they're doing.
Hi, my name is Edward Antonimer. My address is 1616 Raleigh Court. In addition to that, I actually own four homes within probably a three-block radius of, including one at 1605 I'm developing right now to sell. Several questions. First of all, I just want to ask a question. Is approval as has been requested, is this a... is this a foregone conclusion? Is this a waste of my time to be here presenting my arguments for you not allowing the cemetery, mausoleum, whatever, to be located there? Is it foregone conclusion? Is there any benefit to me being here?
What's your last name, sir?
Anton, A-N-T-O-N-E.
Mr. Anton, that's really a decision you're going to have to make for yourself. We're willing to listen to any commentary you're willing to offer.
I think you misunderstood my question. My question is, is there any value to me presenting my argument?
Well, one of your questions was, was this a waste of your time? And that's my response.
Is it a foregone conclusion? Was my exact verbiage.
We're willing to hear your commentary, Mr. Anton.
I haven't gotten an answer, but okay. First of all, the other question I have is what benefits? How could this possibly benefit me or the community having a mausoleum and cemetery there? I heard the one negative from my research, I did see that there would be negative impacts typically to home values. Well, in my case, I've got four homes, which I estimate a value of the four combined, $420,000 or so. 12 percent, what's that, roughly $60,000? Is the city willing to give me that money back? Just asking. And as far as security, you and I both know, anyone with a modicum of intelligence knows you can talk about security. But the cemeteries do tend to be an incubator for drug activity. Like the other young lady mentioned, the fact that that is a wooded area. There are, you know, things are going to happen once that area is cleared out. We all know, yeah, there is snakes. This is Mobile, Alabama. What benefit, what possible benefit? What are the positives versus the negatives to me? I certainly did not move there and buy properties there with the intent of having the cemetery back up to my properties or to devalue my holdings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anton. I want to make certain, is anyone else that would like to speak during this particular appeal?
I'm short. Hey, everybody. I'm Sally Grayson. And my husband and I live directly across the street on Wolf Ridge Road from the property we're talking about, along with the Walshes who live south of us. This is all...
Ms. Grayson?
Yes.
Can you give us your address, please?
It's 1750 Wolf Ridge Road.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. This was all my family's, all of the network property. And so, I'm very concerned, not concerned, but I'm interested in what happens to it. Because it's been in my family for many, many, many years. We have observed a lot of bad activity that's going on across the street now. I cannot see anything but improvement if this is allowed to go in. And as Mr. Richardson said, we don't have mausoleums here. This is not a burial in the ground. And I'm sure our neighbors have done their work and researched on property values. But I do know that my husband was raised in Spring Hill, and Spring Hill Cemetery, right across the street. I also know that if this property went to something like a low-income housing project, talk about your property values going down. I just think that this is a nice, good idea for us. I think it's going to be safe. I think that the developers and the owners have done a good job in what they were supposed to do. So, I just feel like, as Mr. Walsh and my husband Peter and I are just concerned over the drainage and the position of the entry. We don't want it right across the street from either of our driveways. Other than that, I just think it's probably a good idea. I know that the people in Chesterfield behind us are concerned. But I just don't think that, as far as the wildlife goes, they'll probably just come across the street on our property to be fined. And I think the wildlife or the snakes will clear out if it's developed. So, that's all I had to say, is I'm for it. We like the idea. So, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our appeal. Thank all of you.
We need a motion.
Is there a motion?
There's a motion to grant the appeal.
Second.
There's been properly motion and second to grant the appeal and a discussion.
Can I ask a question of our legal counsel? I know that the Planning Commission has put in place certain conditions. The drainage, of course, is city code. And no development can add additional water onto other people's property. So, it would have to be contained. And that's an engineering issue. But the city would certainly see that as this develops. The cameras and security gate, if this council was to add that as a condition, a requirement, would that have to go all the way back again? Or is this because the applicant has stated they're planning this anyway and talking about doing this as part of belonging in the community because of the concerns that were mentioned to the Planning Commission?
I don't know.
I'm sorry. I just would like to assure, if that's okay, because I really think the public needs to hear this, I'd like to hear it, too.
Mr. Chairman, may I address a question?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Rich, I think, and subject to Ms. Cochran's consent as well, this has got to come back before the Planning Commission for a one-lot subdivision in order for this whole process to move forward.
I see.
And so, I would ask that that be considered as part of that process to add that as a condition at that time. Because I do believe that if you were to add additional conditions to the approval, that that would probably merit having to go back through the initial planning approval process.
I didn't know. That's why I asked.
Yeah. And so, if Ms. Cochran could get comfortable with that and Ms. Papas is here with planning and zoning, I think we could probably address that at the subdivision level.
Okay. All right.
Any further questions? No, ma'am. Any further questions from members of the council? There's a motion on the floor. Mr. Dase, can you repeat your motion, please?
The motion is to grant the appeal.
And there's been a second. We've had discussion. All in favor of granting the appeal, granting the appeal, let it be known by the sound of aye? All in favor of denying the appeal, let it be known? All of those in favor of denying the appeal? All those in favor of... Your motion was for us to grant the appeal.
All opposed.
Who's opposed to?
All of those who are in opposition, let it be known by the sound of aye.
Opposed, yeah.
Opposed.
So...
It's unanimous.
It was unanimously denied the appeal. And we appreciate each and every one of you coming down. We'd ask that you stay active as this moves through the further Planning Commission process. And Madam City Clerk, we're ready to move forward.
Can I say, just so the residents can hear this, on a subdivision, how many people get notice or that's not even noticed, is it? Okay, adjacent property owners will get notice when the subdivision comes back to Planning Commission? And adjacent, so across the street?
And across the street, too.
Okay, directly across the street. So, it's not by footage, it's a budding. Okay. Just want to make that clear because of the concern about the past planning approval. Thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
Public hearings today is a public hearing to declare structures at 414 Chin Street, 414 and a half Chin Street, and 651 South Carolina Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in these particular public hearings? If not, public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Arian Morrison.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here today. As introduced, my name is Arian Morrison, and I am the Distinguished Young Woman of America for 2018. I'm here today just to share some of the joys that I've experienced as the national representative over the past year and give you guys a little bit of insight as to what this year's 50 national final participants have in store for them. One of the great things about being the national representative, and there are many, is that I get to have a little bit of input into the form our shows take while we are here in Mobile. The choreographer and I put our heads together and decided that one show would be themed "Homecoming." We get to explore all of the highly visible aspects of homecoming, like the marching band and playing around with different athletic themes, but also the ones that cause us to put a little bit more thought into what it means to have a homecoming, to come back to a place that is a significant part of your intellectual and identity development. Here in Mobile, over the past year, I have been able to find a new home. And that is what I'm so excited to introduce this year's 50 participants to as well. I have a host family, we all have host families, who so generously open their doors to us, who share all of the food, they're each other's siblings and their toys with us at times as well. That is one element of the home here in Mobile. The home also extends beyond those four walls of our host family's house to the greater community. Just today, myself and the 50 participants took a tour around the campus of the University of South Alabama, met with many at the college, many of our girls from past years. And one of the girls in this class as well will attend the University of South Alabama thanks to the generous scholarship money we are offered through the program. Just after that, we went to the Children and Women's Hospital, met with some of the patients, performed with the patients. And it was a wonderful opportunity. This, again, is another element of Mobile as home. We still all have a week and a half here together. In that week and a half, we'll visit Winsels. We'll go to the Mardi Gras museum. And everybody will learn the correct location for the origin of Mardi Gras. We'll tour the battleship. We'll dance with our host families in the hangar not long after that. It is all of these incredibly memorable, important, transformative, and wonderful experiences that inspired the theme of homecoming for one of this year's shows. I cannot thank you all enough for allowing Mobile to be a home for my sisters and I, for giving rise to even the thought of theming a show of homecoming for a place that many of us may only come once or where some of us choose to call home for the rest of our lives. Thank you, thank you, thank you for opening the gates of your city, the doors of your city to us and allowing us to experience Mobile for all of its joy.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. Chair, we do want to remind everyone that tickets are available. The preliminaries are the 27th and 28th, correct? And then, the finals are the 29th, all at the Civic Center. So, go buy your tickets and enjoy. The program is fantastic. These 50 young women have incredible talent. So, when you go, it's one of these programs where you're waiting for more, you're waiting for more. And it's so enjoyable. So, go ahead and get your tickets. And before I forget, I do want to introduce Kendra and Kathy. Kendra Haskins, Kathy Latta, y'all are so important to this. Thank you so much for coming and being here with us and for shepherding these wonderful young women through their two weeks here in Mobile.
All right. Congratulations.
Brian Lee. Brian Lee is here regarding Resolution 41584. This is scheduling a public hearing, proposed rezoning on East Drive.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Lee. I live at 300 Trent Mill Court in Mobile. I am the past president of the Ridgefield Property Owners Association. On your agenda today is an item to schedule a public hearing on two pieces of property located on East Drive. Currently, there are one property, two single-family homes exist on them. We have an out-of-town developer that is wanting to develop there through the efforts of District 6 Councilperson, Ms. Rich. She's arranged to have meetings with the neighbors and the developer. There were a total of three meetings, and we're grateful for those meetings. I was personally in attendance of two of those meetings. They have brought forth some grand plans to pack a lot into these two small lots here. There's a lot of questions that are still unanswered. We're concerned with the increased traffic that it's going to bring to this area. And just kind of a reminder to everybody on the council, because I've been down here before, we're in that area, basically. Old Shell Road is our north boundary. Airport is our south. We've got university, and then, we've got Hillcrest. As we all know, the university's building a stadium as we speak. This has caused a lot of notice to this area. And right now, it's unfortunate to say that as change happens, it's just piecemeal change. And we don't see that as good. This particular development is going to add a lot of traffic into this small residential road. There's another development under construction just to the north of this that the city worked with the developer and made arrangements to have them go out onto Center Drive, an undeveloped street in Mobile that is now going to be developed. We asked the developer to consider the same thing that would take the stress off and not have all the traffic running through the neighborhood. They didn't think that that was a workable solution. I think if it's workable for the other, that it should certainly be workable for this. There's a lot of, you know, one side's here, one side is there. We look forward to the day when we can work with the city. I'm not sure if it would be the council, urban development, to come up with a comprehensive plan for this area. I don't know if the right word is a master plan. I do know we're going through some zoning and stuff. And it could be that it's going to weave into there. But this particular area, this geographic area is in dire need so we can maintain a livable neighborhood environment that we have. With all that being said, I just don't think that this project is ready to move forward. And that's what I'm here to bring that message forward, you know, to the council, that there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And I just don't think it's time for this. And I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
This is Shabir Hussain. This is Shabir Hussain, and he's also speaking regarding 41584.
My name is Shabir Hussain. I live in 7321 Isle of Palms Drive. Our project was not put on the agenda before. Thanks to Ms. Wanda Cochran, she put this on the agenda. So, I'm here to answer any questions. I heard the gentleman who spoke before me said for us to use Center Drive. We, that's not possible because there's a huge elevation change from the lot that we have. The other project is probably further down. That's probably why that was possible for them. But for us, there's a huge elevation change, and we worked with the planning commission. They were also, they knew that it was impossible, and they recommended the design, and that's what we followed. And based on the recommendation, the city, I believe they have done the traffic, you know, research, and we are only building 26 houses, single-family brick homes with two-car garage. So, I'm here to answer any questions you all may have regarding the project.
Are there any questions from members of the council?
No.
Thank you.
CIP resolutions being held over. 21557, authorized contract with McElany Construction Company for 2018 miscellaneous group A drainage improvements. 21559, authorized contract with Sunset Contracting for 2018 Arc Road infrastructure improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Properly motion and second in a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items pass.
Resolutions held over. 21560, authorized performance contract with Southwest Alabama Workforce Development Council. 31561, authorized grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice for the 2019 Cops Stop School Violence Prevention Program Grant. 01562, authorized agreement with Chempro Services to provide herbicide treatment of Bates Field Landfield and Drainage Canals. 21563, authorized contract with Clark Gear Lathan and Associates for Facility Condition Assessment Consulting Services for Brookley Building 23 West. 21565, authorized performance contract with Southwest Alabama Chapter of Alabama Coalition of Citizens with Disabilities. 37566, approved issuance of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Norbert Zalanka doing business as airtail transportation shuttle and taxi service to operate a taxi service. And 37567, approved issuance of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Paul Dunning doing business as premier limo to operate a limousine service.
So moved.
Second.
Properly motion and second in a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items passed.
21564, authorized contract with Emerald Coast Utilities Authority for acceptance and processing of recyclables.
So moved. I mean, move to table.
Second.
Properly motion and second to table in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed.
Consent resolutions being introduced the first time. 03573 through 6596.
Motion to suspend Ruth for me to consideration of resolution 03593 through 6596. With the exception of 6594, that would lay off for one week.
Second.
Properly motion and second in a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
03573, reappoint Emmanuel Roberts and Matt Singleton to the Police and Firefighters Retirement Plan Board. 03574, appoint Mary Williams to the Second Medical Clinic Board of the City of Mobile. 08575, approve requisitions over 7,500 for the week of June 10th. 08576, approve item-based bids. 21577, authorized contract with Pyrotechnico Fireworks for July 4th fireworks display. 31578 and 579 are approving grant applications to the U.S. Department of Justice for the Alabama Gulf Coast Human Trafficking Task Force Grant and the Gulf State's Regional Law Enforcement Technology Training and Technical Assistance Grant. 31580, authorized grant application to the U.S. Department... I'm not going to read that one. 31580, authorized grant application to U.S. Department of Justice for the 2019 Innovations in Community-Based Crime Reduction Program Grant. 40581, 582 and 583 are declaring the structures on Chin Street and South Carolina Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. 58585, 58585, add Restore Lawn Care and Irrigation LLC to the list of private contractors to abate properties declared public nuisances. 58586 and 587 are declaring weeds noxious and authorizing removal of weeds, Group 1593 and 1591. 60588, approve award a special bonus to Officer of the Month Blake Duke. 09595, appropriate funding for merit positions to support the Capital Improvement Plan. And 6596, approve the merger of Alterpoint Health Systems, Inc. with the Mobile Association for Retarded Citizens, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Properly motion and second in a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
41584, direct the city clerk to schedule a public hearing for the proposed rezoning of property at 162 and 186 East Drive from R1 to R2.
So moved.
Second.
Properly motion and second in a discussion.
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
I'll be brief. I believe the resident nearby this development was very distinct in that we are seeing a lot of piecemeal development in this area because of the growth of the University of South Alabama, which is a very positive economic engine and entity in our community. I've spoken to Shayla Biko, the director of Build Mobile, and the initiator of looking at long-range planning in our city to look at this area of our town because of all of the development for student housing and the residential areas that are already in place, and the negative effects that something that, in the long run, could be very positive. But because this is, again, a development that will add additional traffic and a different component to the area than what is there today, and it abuts other single-family property that chances are will be developed and therefore needs a plan from the city so that it's done well and fits in with the community and doesn't act as a negative influence, but more of a positive. So, I would ask that the council not hear this until there is a time where the city is more proactive on what is going on in this area, on the behalf of all the residents and the owners of property in that area. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
All items passed.
CIP resolutions being introduced, 21589 through 21590.
Motion to suspend Ruth for me to consideration of Resolution 21589 to 21590.
Okay, we're going to take these. These are all over.
Second.
Properly motion and second in a discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items passed, wherever you're watching.
21589, authorized contract with Gutwood Mills and Kaywood for 2019 drainage group C improvements. These are Hercules Street Drainage Repairs, Bell Isle Drainage Improvements, and Woodcliff Drive North Drainage Improvements. 21590, authorized contract with McElany Construction for 2018 Harbor Drive, Darwood Drive, Farnell Drive, ditch, and drainage repairs.
John just walked in.
These are important. I would just like to say, if you don't mind, that these are vitally important, absolutely critical drainage projects in the city of Mobile, and we need to move ahead with great dispatch in order to accomplish them.
Make the motion.
So moved.
Second.
But properly moved and second in a discussion?
Yes. You'll notice on our agenda, which is published ahead of time, that the drainage is from 2019, which is this budget cycle, but also there's one that happens to be in Councilman Williams' district, 2018, which does go over the amount that we normally retain for the next hearing or council meeting. But I, too, think these things have been well advertised and well-known to the community and very needed. So, I'm glad that we're voting on them today.
Well, same here, same here. Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items passed.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 21591 through 61593.
Said resolutions will level for one week by Council Ruth.
Announcements.
Mrs. Rich?
I would just like to mention to people that are out there using the splash pad, which is very, very popular, and I'm so glad that it is, but please eat your ice cream outside of the splash pad. There will be tables coming. I don't know exactly when that contract will move forward, but the money, some of the money that was raised for the handprints will go into buying some of those tables, and that will encourage people to definitely eat their ice cream and put their wrapper into the trash. It cannot go into the splash pad. It makes a lot of problems for the filtering. So, please be good stewards and eat that stuff off of the splash pad. Thank you.
Mr. Small?
Thank you, Vice President Manzi. Greetings to the citizens of District 3. Last, but it's past weekend, Councilman Richardson and also Councilman John Williams. We had an opportunity to go to the Paris Air Show this past weekend. Very, very successful trip. Many things was talked about, even from, you know, a company's about to get ready to locate here in Mobile. But besides that, the most important thing that was very important to me out of the whole deal, especially the announcement of the new company that's coming to Mobile, is when the chairman of Airbus had spoke at the reception that the Mobile Bay had hosted on Monday evening. He has pretty much stated to the many of the suppliers that was present, and there were many suppliers present on Monday evening, and he was, he pretty much spelt out, hey, move to Mobile. Mobile is where it's happening. He pretty much said that 15 years ago, Mobile would not, or nobody would imagine, Mobile would be in the position that it is today, and how quickly Mobile has grown in the aerospace. There's no telling how far we will be in the next 10 years. And he did not really sugarcoat it. He just pretty much just came out and just told the many suppliers, hey, move to Mobile, get to Mobile. And it was a great opportunity that we had senators, the governor, city council people, the county commission, all present for the many vendors to really just see Mobile and how eager we are for business. And again, it was a great and very productive trip that we have to even bring more industry, especially in the aerospace industry, here to Mobile. It was so ironic that we was on the train heading to the air show, and David, which is over at the Mobile Chamber, he was sitting there, and one of the foreigner, he had stated, you know, where y'all from? And he said, we said, "Mobile," and he was like, "Airbus." He's like, you know, I know exactly where Mobile is. We got our eyes on Mobile. So, you know, I can imagine Mobile as being like Atlanta or Las Vegas or, you know, New York, you know, when we talking about aerospace, because people all across the world know about Mobile, Alabama, the home of Airbus in America. Great news for our city and also our region. Also, next week, I would be making an important announcement about a very important meeting that will become, coming up in District 3 next month. This particular meeting will be a series of meeting, not only to benefit the citizens of District 3 or South DIP, but will benefit Mobile overall. This meeting will be conducted in conjunction with myself and also with the city administration. And again, I would be making a very important announcement on next Tuesday about a very important meeting. Now, only it will affect South DIP District 3, but it will also affect the city of Mobile. Great things. Again, I haven't said this in a minute, but District 3 is a place where things are happening. Thank you, Vice President Manzi.
All right. Ms. Gregor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A lot of things happening in District 7 as well. This past weekend, I was part of the 60th anniversary celebration and reunion for the Hillsdale Heights neighborhood. We had a terrific meet and greet Friday evening at the Hillsdale Recreation Center. And then Saturday, during the daytime hours, pretty much all day, there was a huge picnic set up on the grounds. And I have to compliment our Parks and Recreation Department, as well as Public Works, for how the whole facility and the grounds looked. It was spectacular. I've never seen that area look any better. They did a terrific job getting ready for guests. You know, it's kind of like when, at your home, when guests are coming over, or you're having a party, you always clean up, fix up, and the Hillsdale area looked terrific. So, a big thank you to everyone who was involved in doing that. And again, it was wonderful to see so many friends and family come back into Mobile to celebrate Hillsdale. One of the things that I find really interesting, and really heartwarming, heartwarming, too, is that there are a lot of original homeowners who are still living in Hillsdale. They moved there in 1959, and they are still living there, still very active. So, it was just really great to see all of them and to watch everyone come together and get reacquainted over this past weekend. Also, on Monday evening, I helped welcome the 50 distinguished young women to Mobile. We held the event over at Cooper Riverside Park, and that's the first time they've done the welcome ceremony there. So, it was a terrific backdrop. The host families come, sponsors come, and everybody is there to really provide that warm welcome to these 50 young women as they come into Mobile. As you heard, they spend two weeks here, and during the preliminaries and finals is when we will see most of their families and friends come into town. So, if you're downtown a lot during these two weeks, you'll see the young women, and then as we get closer to the preliminaries and the finals, you'll see all of their families and friends coming into town as well. And one last thing, you all know that we passed a resolution honorarily naming three streets for Mel Showers, who is retiring or has sort of retired already from WKRG. Well, this afternoon, we will be unveiling these street signs in front of the television station. I'll be there. Everyone is invited to come watch the big unveiling, and Mel will be there to see his name up on a street sign. So, really great, and certainly a wonderful gentleman and journalist deserving of this, and I look forward to being there with everybody else. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. As I could say, like Councilman Small, we had a very successful trip over at Paris. We spent all day Monday at the air show. We divided the Mobile group up into teams, and they assigned us companies to visit, and we spent hours going from company to company. We went, we visited no one that didn't know who we are in Mobile. Mobile is ranked as big as any other aerospace city in the world. They know who we are. And we spent that day, you know, visiting with them and inviting them to come to the reception. The reception really told who we were, because if you put the reception on and you can't get the suppliers to come to your reception, then you can count yourself out of the game. We were packed out. We were packed out. We had, as CJ said, we had the governor to be there. Both of our senators were there, and the governor was there to talk about, mainly to talk about Airbus, what was happening in the aerospace business. And what we learned is that in less than 10 years, Mobile has become the fourth-largest aerospace hub in the world. You've got Toulouse, Hamburg, you've got Seattle in Mobile. We are number four in the world and growing. And our main goal there was to try to land as many suppliers, you know, Airbus does not make any parts for an airplane. Every part on that airplane is made by somebody else, and they ship them here or they bake it on our campus. Our goal is to have every part on that airplane made at Brookley Field. And when we can do that, I guarantee you, we'll have 15,000 or 20,000 workers on Brookley Field. That is our goal, and we're going to keep going and keep coding them until we can marry them and bring them home and put them on the campus. But it was a very successful trip. On Tuesday, though, you know, they make the bullet trains in Europe. You know, we got Amtrak, you know, Amtrak stops and this, and you had to wait on the freight train. The train our delegation boarded on Tuesday traveled 200 miles per hour, and the company would like to start bringing those trains to our area. would like to start bringing those trains to our area. So we got to wait and get the word back from our delegation who went. We wanted to be here today, plus on tonight, we got the Lutheran delegation in town. They met us at the airport. When we got off the airplane, it was, they had a table set up out there. They got 3,000 Lutheran women in our city, and they have invited me to come and speak with them tonight. I can't wait. I'm ready to go, so I'm looking forward to meeting with them. So I couldn't stay any longer because I had promised them long before I got the dates on the Paris Air Show that I would come and speak with them. I'd like to announce that on tonight, I mean, on tomorrow night, I will be in Trenda Gardens, at the Trenda Gardens Community Meeting. We've sent our notices out. We've tried our best to get the word out, send it to churches, let them know that we're going to have this important meeting, and the most important agenda item is going to be jobs and job training. If you need a job, want a job, you need to come to this meeting because we're going to have companies in the house. We're going to have representation from the fire department. They are recruiting, police department recruiting. We're going to have lots of people talking about jobs. So if you're looking for a job, need a job, you don't have all the skills to get you a good job to take care of your family, you come on, and we're going to have somebody that, as a matter of fact, bitch your state, will pay you to train. Pay you to train. So we can only make these opportunities available. We can't make nobody go and get trained, but we certainly can make this available. So we're going to talk about our CIP projects, disclosures, and we're going to have a report on public safety while we're there. And I would like to close out by saying that for months now, the businesses along Florida Street and O'Shea Road and Dolphin Street have been dealing with the negative impact of roadwork, and now we're receiving messages that some of those businesses are on the verge of collapse, are closing down. And I don't have a definite date of when we're going to complete this roadwork. And I think it's incumbent on us to do everything we can to see that these businesses and their owners and employees, that they stay open and they be viable. We spend thousands of dollars to go and recruit business. That's why we were in Paris. We can't sit here, we can't spend all this money to go and recruit business and sit here and watch our, the own, the business at home close in front of our face. We can't, we cannot do that. We got to do all we can to make sure that these businesses remain viable. If, at least on Florida Street, at least one lane ought to be open. It's business, are they going to work on this side of the street? And then, no, they need to be working over here. When they fix that, they need to work over here. Because if we close all the traffic down, we have set up a condition for these businesses to fold up and close, and I don't think that ought to happen. So I think I would like for the administration to join me to make sure we do everything that we can to reduce the time it's going to take to complete those projects, keep one of those lanes open, not to let no business close. That ought to be our commitment, and that's what I'm committed to do. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Any from the administration?
Mr. Vice President, one item. This refers to Consent Resolution 31-579. It appears on the agenda as a $3,000 grant from the Justice Department for technology training and technical assistance with an in-kind match. Actually, that is a $3 million grant with no match. And what I think is important about this, you know, this goes to support the collaborative technology law enforcement initiative that exists in Mobile, but with cooperation of many other law enforcement agencies. This grant was initiated really through George Talbot's efforts, but with the assistance of Senator Shelby, who, if you have a chance, please give him your thanks should you see him. This is a tremendous grant of a size we haven't seen in a long time. So thank you for your support, and for anybody listening, I think you probably already knew this, but for anybody listening or following this, this is a $3 million grant.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Talbot. We appreciate all the help from Senator Shelby. And any further announcements from members of the council?
Just a typo.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor of dismissing? Aye?
Aye.
Meetings adjourned.
That's a typo.